Special meeting of the PBD City Council will now come to order. The first item on the agenda is item A, the tax classification hearing, and I would ask the clerk to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council, the City PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, December 3, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wiggins Auditorium, City Hall 24 Loosley, PBD Mass, in accordance with Chapter 797 of the Acts of 1979 as amended of the Massachusetts general laws in order to adopt the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for our fiscal year 2016. PBD City Council Councillor, Thomas P. Walsh, City Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, Council President.
Counselor Gravel.
One point of order, are we being televised this evening? Could you please provide the notice?
We'll see if I've memorized this, Counselor. Just like everybody to know that this council meeting is being televised by PA TV, Channel 9 in PBD, and also being recorded by our council stenographer. Thank you.
We have invested in quality of life projects. The scouting way retention basin is working properly and holding back millions of gallons of water that previously flowed to our downtown. The Gardner Park Water Quality and Drainage Project has been a success and has eliminated significant repair costs and frustration to residents in that area. Our South PBD Nature Trail and Conservation Area is open and providing residents with another passive outdoor recreation option, and that is just a few of the highlights of the many projects we have undertaken together. Since those June projections, conditions in PBD have changed, and I'm very pleased to report an increase not of $185 to our average residential tax bill, but an increase of $130, about a 30% reduction in that June projection. So what happened? For the second year in a row, our average residential home value has increased. In June, we outlined a 5% projection. The actual increase is now 6.7%. Now certainly some of that can be attributed to improved conditions in the economy, but make no mistake, our collective efforts with the investments I've outlined earlier continue to make PBD a desirable place to live. To illustrate, part of our June projections included a $750,000 increase in new tax dollars due to new growth. But our new growth, particularly in the commercial sector, were better than expected and provided new tax dollars totaling over $1.1 million, over $350,000 above projections, about 47%. I propose today an increase in our CIP factor to 165 to create a more balanced tax bill and reduce some of the burden on our residential homeowners. And additionally, we have committed, as projected in June, a total of 2.6 million out of our reserves, actually slightly higher than what was projected in June. With our investment in quality of life and the continued delivery of core municipal services that residents have come to expect, we are still among the very lowest residential tax bills in Essex County. As you can see on page 17, and Mike will go through this in more detail, 17 on your packet, when we're compared to our neighboring communities, Salem is $1,000 higher than us on their average residential tax bill. Danvers is $1,400 above our residential tax bill. Beverly is $2,000 above our residential tax bill. Linfield is $4,000 over our residential tax bill, in fact, double, and Middleton is just over $3,000 higher than our residential tax bill. This year, looking at our neighbors, Danvers has announced a $222 tax increase. Beverly is over $200, and Salem is 159. In closing, I want to thank the City Council for being outstanding partners with my administration. Together, we are investing in PBD's future, improving quality of life, and maintaining the affordability that has long been PBD's calling card. I'm certainly here to answer any questions, but I did want to turn it over to Mike for his presentation on the package that you have before you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just waiting for the slides to get up. Okay, this first slide shows the property values by classification, and we can see the residential values increased 6.7%. It's attributed significantly with increases in multifamilies and 2- or 3 families. In addition, the assessors tell me that there were over 500 properties that were bought or sold during this time, giving them more indication of these values. The combined commercial, industrial, and personal values remain stable, increasing $16.1 million, or 1.1%. The commercial values increased 2.2 million. Industrials increased 5.8 million. Most of these increases are within Centennial Park, but some of the hotels were showing higher occupancy and higher room rates. The personal property values decreased 1.9 million, and this is due to updating the depreciation charts. The property's been worth a little bit less because of the accelerated depreciation schedules. And the charts below indicate that the amount of property the residents' values have increased just a little bit more than the prior year. We have 77.7% of total residential value compared to 76.4% of total residential value in 2015. The next chart shows the valuation history from 2011 to 2016. The top line represents residential values. They start off at 4.6 billion, had a slight decrease, a little increase, and in the past two years have gone up 5.3% and another 5.4% to get to 5.2 billion. The assessors anticipate that, starting in January of 2016, we'll have another increase of somewhere around 2% or 3%. The middle yellow line reflects commercial values. Since 2011, these values have increased 127 million, or 12.4%. There's a steady increase there, and the growth is primarily from Centennial Park. The lower line reflects industrial values, and they've decreased 45.7 million. And the very bottom line is the personal property, again, that's decreased 6.2 million. The next chart is to look at the residential values. Single-family homes represent 71.1% of all of the residential value, and they've increased $234 million, or 6.7%. Condos represent 10.1% of the value, and they've increased 6.5%. The 2- and 3 families represent 7.2% of the value, and they've increased 10.3%. Multifamilies represent 9% of the value and have increased 4.2%. And vacant and other land is only 2% of the value, and that's increased 6.3%. Again, the total residential value has increased 6.7% as of January 1, 2015. The next slide analyzes the CIP values. You can see on the chart, the first group represents commercial property values, and there was a steady increase, they were steady for a couple of years, and they've had an increase in 2015 and 2016. This year's change is 12.2 million, excuse me, or 1.1%. The second group is the industrial property values have been steady in 2013 and 2014, and then increased in 2015 and 2016. Third group is the personal property, and as I've indicated, they've gone down $1.9 million due to the depreciation schedule updates. The next slide are the average residential values. In 2011, we were at 285,700. We remained steady for a number of years, and then going from 2014 to 2015, we've increased 15,700. Then again, from 15 to 2016, increased another 20,600. So this year, the average residential value is $324,000. Again, for perspective, residential values have been as high as $374,000. We expect further increases again next year. The average CIP values have remained steady, and again, in 2014 to 2015, and 2015 to 2016, we saw significant increases, 40,000, and then again, another 20,000. Most of this growth comes from new construction additions and renovations of various businesses in Centennial Park. The thing is here, we're showing an average value of $1.4 million, but there's a large discrepancy between the North Shore Mall type of value, or the local store, or garage, things of that nature, there's a big difference. So if you took the median value of all the commercial property, it would be $477,000. The next slide is our history of new growth. On the left column is the residential growth, and then the next column's the commercial growth, and the total growth is the next column. As you can see, in 2008, there was a significant amount of growth, $109 million, and that makes, it kind of skews the average of $57 million in growth on average. So what I did was I took out 2008. In the average from 2009 to 2016, we averaged $25 million of growth a year on the residential side. On the commercial side, we averaged $39 million in growth. This year, we've had $19 million in growth on the residential side, and $36 million in growth on the commercial side, for a total of $55 million in growth. This equates to $237,000 in residential tax, new taxes for residents, and $882,000 in new taxes on the commercial side, for a total of $1.1 million in new taxes, as the mayor alluded to earlier. The next slide is our budget comparison. We're going to compare fiscal 2015 with 2016. On the left column, we have the budget for 2015, which was $149 million. The 2016 budget was $153 million. The increase is $4 million. The Essex County assessment, other amounts to be raised, went down. We had a slight increase in the state and county assessments in allowance for abatements. So in all, we need a total of $3.6 million increase to be raised over the previous year, or 2.36%. How are we going to raise that? We have four sources of revenue. We have property taxes, $98,960,000. We have local receipts at $32,000, $30,000. State aid at $26,200,000. And available local resources at $2.6 million that makes up those amounts. Next chart is a little more in-depth look at local revenues. The column that says fiscal year 2015 actual is how we came in at the end of the year. In order to, a budget for 2016, the DOR doesn't let us increase any more than we had come in on the prior year. So you see that most of the numbers to the right, in the right-hand column, mirror what's in the 2015 column. For example, motor vehicle excise at $7,240,000, we're projecting $7,250,000, and so on. The significant difference in estimated receipts for 2016 would be, we had received a legal settlement for $125,000, and billboard revenue, we're projecting at $850,000 primarily because we received some one-time payments, and we received some of the 2015 funds in 2016. But generally, the amount of billboard revenue would be approximately $245,000, $250,000. So this is sort of a one-time blip that we're going to take advantage of this year, and next year, we will be back down to a $250,000 level.
If I could, Mike, I just wanted to mention, in terms of the billboard revenue, the eye on the ball for that location, the city-owned property, paid two years, $500,000, so we will not be getting money from them the following year, but that'll be 250 every year thereafter. So I think going, after next year, we'll be looking at 250, but going forward, it will be about $500,000 in annual revenue. It's just that they pay two years upfront for that particular location.
Thank you, Mayor. Next slide shows state aid. From 2012 through 2016, it's remained fairly stable. On average, we've increased approximately $270,000 a year. This year, we have a $495,000 increase over 2015. And then the next slide is where we'll be talking about classification. Before classification, residential values represent 77% of the overall total value of $6.7 billion. The CIP values represent 22% of the total value. So if each person was taxed equally, the tax rate would be $14.66, and the average homeowner would pay $4,750. We're proposing a shift of 165%, and that's going to move $14.4 million from the residential value to the commercial value. That would save homeowners $888 on average and increase the costs towards CIP customers to $13,565. As you can see, that over the years, we've been shifted from residential to commercial on average between 14.1 and 14.5%, so we're right in the ballpark of what we normally The next slide shows the history of our tax rates. You see the tax rates remain very stable. We've had lower tax rates, then we've raised them as needed in 2014, and they've declined down in 2015 and 2016. The homeowners, if the homeowners were taxed at the equalized rate, the annual tax rate would be $2.74 more per thousand, or again, they would pay $888 more. These cities' tax rates have become very stable. This year's tax rate we're proposing is $11.92 for residential and $24.19 for commercial. The next slide shows the homeowners' annual tax bills. Again, the average homeowner's tax bills have been relatively low with modest increases when needed. Like most communities, the dramatic increases in the cost of salaries and benefits and little change in state aid or local revenues puts a strain on our budget, leaving little choice for us but to increase homeowner and commercial tax rates. The average tax bill over, since 2011, has increased approximately 3%. This year, with our tax bill at $3,862, we're proposing a $130 increase, or 3.5%. The value of each home has risen to $324,000 from $303,000. The next slide is the average annual tax bill for commercial, industrial, and personal. You can see from left to right, there's a steady increasing tax bill, with the average bill increasing $331.85 this year, and a drop in the rate from 2430 to 2419, and an increase in average value of $1,423,500 from $1,403,400. The next slide gives you some ideas of the changes in the different tax bills. Residents, on average, 49% of residents will see an increase of $100 or less in their tax bill. On the commercial side, 38% will have a tax bill of less than $500, and another 42% will see a decrease, for a total of 80% on the commercial side being $500 or less. Finally, in the slide the mayor alluded to earlier, it compares the city of PBD with other communities in Essex County. other communities in Essex County. The latest information we have available is for two thousand and fifteen because all the other communities are, are doing their tax rates for two thousand and sixteen. But on this chart, Peabody has the fourth lowest annual tax bill in Essex County. It has the highest asset, access levy capacity of six-point-seven million. The average single-family tax bill in Essex County is sixty-four-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. Peabody's was thirty-nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars, or thirty-nine percent lower, or two-hundred-and-fifteen, two-thousand-five-hundred-and-twelve dollars below average. On the last line of the chart, you can see Peabody for two thousand and sixteen, where we will still have one of the lowest annual tax bills, maintaining more levy capacity at eight-point-one million dollars to deal with future budgetary constraints that we're going to see in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. Peabody overall has twenty-five percent of the total levy capacity in Essex County. Finally, what's going to be, what's before you tonight. This, this city has a total value of six-point-seven billion dollars, an allowable tax levy under Prop. Two, Proposition Two and a Half. If we were to tax everything that, that the DOR allowed, we could tax a hundred-and-seven million dollars, but we're only anticipating taxing ninety-eight million, nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. That leaves us a levy reserve of eight million, one-hundred-and-three thousand dollars. At a classification factor of one-hundred-and-sixty-five, the residential tax rate would be eleven dollars and ninety-two cents and the commercial rate at twenty-four-nineteen.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Counselors? Counselor Sassla.
Line on, right? Just a question on, so on page number nine, it talks about the, the net change from the fiscal two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen budget, from one-fifty-six million to one-fifty-nine. I'm just curious, of the three-point-six million in changes, what amount of that is contracted obligations that we have? So we have no, you know, the contracts, we have to deal with that and, in that piece.
Do you, do you mean the contracts for salaries?
Yes, salaries, benefits, absolutely.
They're actually not included in that. We're, we're, we'll be coming to you, we have, we have, we have two appropriations later for next week for fire and ordinance, and we'll be coming to you further down the road as the contracts get settled. There's going to be something in, approximating, approximating two-point-two million dollars in total of additional salary increases that would have to come from free cash.
Okay. And just turning to page ten, just a couple of quick questions. Landfill revenues, you know, I see, we see some vast fluctuations and just wonder if you could comment on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sassla, Councilor Sassla. I should have mentioned that as we were going through. We're being very conservative here. I've had multiple discussions with the manager, the operating manager over at Covanta. Right now, they're going through a period of time where they're, and I might have mentioned this at an earlier meeting, they're going through a time where they're correcting some of their machinery and fixing some flaws. As you may remember, this metal recovery program is the first one in the United States, and there's some testing that's going on and some changes and some rehabilitation work they need to do with some of the machinery. I think I mentioned before, and it's still the case, it's funny, you know, being from Peabody, but the issue that they're having trouble with is water. And they're implementing some machinery that's kind of like an oven where they're going to be able to, to dry some of the material that comes through. So we did experience some revenue last year of one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, but we wanted to be a little conservative because there's going to be, is going to be some downtime that they're going to have over at Covanta. And, but they're committed to the process. They already have a couple of other locations that are looking at to expand, but they want to have it completed and the process nailed down at Peabody before they do that expansion. So we wanted to be a little conservative on that number, but we think that that's going to increase.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, on the same page, I just was curious about the recreation revenue, which, you know, my family participates a lot with the rectifier, and I think they do a great job. I was just curious, it, so it looks like it had gone up, went, went down a hundred thousand, then we're going back up a hundred thousand. Is there, just, just any, do you have any background on what's going on as far as why the fluctuation there?
That, that's primarily Brooksbury Farms' contribution towards the budget.
Okay.
And, and they've been doing well, so we, we upped that one.
And, and just one final question. I, I don't have much personal experience with Medicaid, so can you just comment about, I see the Medicaid reimbursements went down significantly. Is that a, a one-year decrease? We see that stabilize in next year to around four-hundred thousand again, or can you comment on that?
The, the, the school department bills out the Medicaid, and traditionally, as you can see, is stable around that four-hundred thousand dollar level. Last year, they, they had more reimbursements, but, you know, it was a warning not to go there because, because it wasn't anticipated to be that high this year.
Okay, thank you. And, and just in closing, you know, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your thoughts. I think a lot of times, you know, we come to the meetings and we lead our life and sometimes we forget about the accomplishments that we do and, and what we do in the city. And when you listed them off at the beginning, it made me reflect on the past year or two years. I've been on the council and, you know, I, I feel very fortunate to grow up in the city and be able to raise a family here. And as I said, I do forget some of the things, so I appreciate you sharing that and I look forward to continue to work with you and your administration. And thank you for the job you're doing. Appreciate it.
Further comments, questions, councilors?
Well, I guess this is one of those good news and bad news stories. The good news is that the, the assessed values are going up. The bad news is that if we didn't do anything with the rate, that would mean there'd be a significant increase in taxes automatically by the assessments. The good news is we lowered the, the rate for the residential. The bad news is we decided to push the burden onto the commercials and based on the, you know, the significant increase from one-hundred-and-sixty-one percent to one-hundred-and-sixty-five And I know there was a, a fact made there about those that are, you know, eighty percent will receive a tax increase of five-hundred dollars or less. And, you know, I think if we made that statement to a residential and said, you know, you're, just, just think how lucky you are that your increase is going to be five-hundred dollars or less, there would be a few frowns out on the street. But again, commercial buildings tend to carry less sway in the, in the voting booth than the residential. So I get it, but I'm more concerned about those that have the higher valuation and are struggling because of the way that valuation is derived. And, you know, you would think in, in averages, everything works well, but it doesn't sometimes. So properties that we're depending upon to carry the burden of the base are going to carry more of that overall tax increase that you're expecting from the base. I don't want to be one who's considered fighting for the big guy all the time, but when and if you carry that at someplace like the shopping center, and when and if you carry that at someplace like Centennial Park and you disincent because the tax rate is carrying higher than they could get elsewhere, the businesses move and the net effect of that is that you end up having fewer taxes you can pull out of it in future years and you have vacant buildings and vacant spaces. And I don't think you, you have to go too far up at the shopping center and look at the number of vacant spaces and anchor stores that are leaving because the common area charges and the property tax bills are driving the rents up, and that's across the board. So yeah, I, I, I get it when you've got a property that's valued at four-hundred thousand dollars as a commercial property, that's one thing, but when you've got a property that's carrying hundreds of millions of dollars and now you're looking at an increase of way more than five-hundred thousand dollars, you're looking at increases of thirteen, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars. And that in itself has to be carried by all the people who rent those properties as CAM charges. So I, I, I just want to be cautious on the CIP because it's, it's passed off as though it's not going to be a problem, but it could be something that carries a longer-lasting impact on those coming into those properties, and, and we're depending on those properties in particular to carry a big part of the tax burden of the city. That being said, it looked like to me that the nut we had to carry to make the budget was, according to Mr. Gingrich, three-point-six-eight-two-four-one-nine. So that was the delta between, you know, what we, and, and I assume that's, you know, pre-changing the tax rate. So looking at last year's values versus this year's values and then saying, okay, we've got to come up with an extra three-point-six million dollars, how do we do that? And that's exactly how he presented it. He says, well, we're going to do it by taking property taxes up two-point-two and local receipts, we're going to drop by six-hundred-and-sixty thousand. And then we're going to add state aid and, and available resources, and that's how we're going to come up with that increase. And I think it's, it's a remarkable task that we've been able to keep it as low as, as we've been able to keep it. But I look at some of that argument is based upon estimates of which I, I have a hard time believing that, and again, I hate to say it, Mike, but this is what we've seen when we look at the skating rink and the golf course, too. Every year, we come in with, the safest thing to say is we're going to get zero, you know, because then anything positive is a good thing. And I, and I suppose I could live in that conservative world, except for the fact that because we say it's zero, we set a rate that's going to drive up some other taxes. We have not had a year where we've had zero Medicare Part D reimbursement. We've not had any years where, where those, those two categories that are listed as zero come in at zero. The combined, in the worst year, last year, if I look at the actuals, the combined is a hundred thousand dollars. You mean we can't project at least a hundred thousand dollars coming in? I, I, I don't get it. And why would we go lower on hotel taxes? We just said the economy's up and the, so all of these estimates, which drive our analysis, which result in what we set as the tax rate, are all set at something less than what we've currently done over time. And, and I don't get it. Because then what'll happen is if we set the rate and we do what we're going to do and those come in higher, we'll have surpluses, excess. And what will that do? Well, that'll add to our already high reserve. Now, again, it may sound odd for a business guy to be complaining about high reserves, but, you know, to me, the job is to balance the safety stock of the companies, of the company, of the city's cash to the need for that cash. And to constantly being, going after that and it growing the way it's been growing, it just tells me that we're taxing more than we have to tax. And even though we're the lowest tax in the area, or the fourth lowest at this point in time, I'm wondering why we can't even be lower taxed and why not use some of that reserve to keep that tax lower so that neither the businesses nor, you know, I'd be thrilled if you came tonight and said there'll be a zero-dollar residential increase for next year and the businesses will take on a reasonable increase based upon the improved assessed value of, of what they've done. I'd be thrilled with that. But it's going to, it's again, we're, we're pecking away at it like a little bit at a time. We're keep chipping away at it. And some of it is based on, in my opinion, very conservative numbers that are showing up in what we expect to take in from the different sources. So I, I, that part makes me uncomfortable. I mean, I'm thrilled that we're using more of the reserve to offset the levy, in particular to offset the levy associated with debt services. I think that's a great idea. But I think still, we could do more, especially if our reserves are sitting at, the last time we heard, they were around nineteen million. After this, what will the reserves be, Mike? If we borrow the money from, if we take the money from the reserves that's being requested tonight, what would it be?
Well, what I anticipate is that we're going to take one-point-five million from free cash, five-hundred thousand from the one-point-eight million that we talked about at the last meeting. And we're going to need to settle contracts for about two-point-two million. So at the end of the day, the free cash is going to be down to eleven-point-six million without any snow or ice or any of those other issues. And we're going to go from approximately twenty-point-nine million currently to around sixteen million at, at the end of June. And then some of the line items that you talked about are no longer in play. The Medicare Part D reimbursement was going to the GIC now, so we're not getting that anymore. And the urban redevelopment taxes were based on some parcels that, that were, that were no longer available to us anymore. The, the last payments came in. That's why it went from two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand to sixty-eight thousand. And, and the other line items, the, the DOR really only lets us go to what the limit was in the prior year. Now, obviously, there's some small fluctuations, but they pretty much mirror what they were.
Well, again, if, if I said, it, it seems like small amounts, but for instance, the, the water use charges went from five-five-seven-one, you're projecting five-five-hundred. There's seventy-one thousand. You know, you got nine thousand in the next line. You got landfill revenues, we're, we're conservative at, down at fifty. There's a hundred-and-six thousand there. I mean, if I were doing what the Department of Revenue said and I said, okay, I'm going to reflect this year equals last year, then put the numbers up at that, and then what would the difference be? And all of that could come off the tax burden that you're projecting. Now, you may be wrong, right? And at the end of the fiscal year, we may have to approve a supplemental to, to, to offset the amount that you're wrong. But you might be right, and that might mean that the money, if that money was there, that might mean it's money that's not going into, into the surplus. I just want to try to balance this thing a little bit more so that we don't continuously go after, and I, and I get it, I, I, I appreciate the fact that it's lower per household, I really do. I think, you know, it's digestible. So I, I, I'm not complaining about that. I just want to try to balance this thing a little bit more to see if we can't even, I mean, if this is our best effort to get it as low as possible, then so be it. But I, I, I'd love to see, you know, is there a way that we could, if we looked at this just a little differently, could we get it down so that the increase was even less? That's all I'm asking.
Further questions, councilor? Councilor Manning-Martin?
Thank you. On page sixteen, I'm curious, the, under the CIP section, more than, there's twenty total businesses that are going to experience a more than ten-thousand-dollar increase. What's the highest increase that any one of those twenty businesses is going to face?
I think I have that. Hold on.
Simply because 10,000, I mean, that's a lot of money, but I'm sure it really doesn't specify the range.
It's the highest. Grabbuck, I think is the highest.
Probably the highest. That's a 22,000 increase for them, correct?
That's correct.
I appreciate all the work that's been done. I'm just, you know, we have these large companies that are here, and they provide a lot of jobs, and they obviously provide a lot of taxes to offset the residential. I just want to be careful that we don't tax them out of the city. That's a large tax increase for some people, 22,000, and it's 20 businesses, and I'm sure they're large businesses, and they bring in a lot of employment, a lot of job opportunities. I just wanted to recognize that we don't want them to pack up and go to New Hampshire and take all the, not only the tax revenue and leave empty spaces, but also all the jobs that they do provide to the city and the state. So, I just think we need to be very careful in raising the CIP rate in the future, because I think this is significant. Thank you.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I was also a little concerned about the increase in the CIP by 4%. I think the max is 175, is that right?
It's 175. And we've ran as high as 170 in the past.
Ran as high, right. So, and that's kind of my point. That number has gone up and down in the past, and what I look at, you know, the points made by Counselor Gravell and Counselor Manning-Martin, is that five-year history on the bottom of page 12, and that tells me that we're actually holding pretty steady in terms of the shift of the burden to the business community in that 14.1 to 14.5% range. So, while the factor may go up and down year to year, the shift has been pretty consistent. So, I don't think we're doing anything unusual here as compared to recent history. Would you agree with that, Mr. Gingrich?
That's correct. Generally, as the residential values increase, that factor will go up, and as the residential values decrease, the factor will go down.
And with respect to the reserves, that you're projecting 16 million at the end of June, that puts us basically right at that 10% number that the bond rating agencies would want to see. Is that correct?
That's accurate, yes.
So, to do anything more than that, we start to run the risk of...
And plus, we want to plan on 2017 and 2018 to take another 2 million and apply it to the tax rate each year.
Right, I understand. So, and that's the risk you run, because if you go too deep into the reserve, you can't repeat that. So, you know, I think I'm supportive of the extra that's being taken this year, but I think going much beyond that does create a potential problem in future years. So, I'm comfortable with what's been presented here. Thank you, Mr. President.
If I could, maybe I could.
Thank you. In the past history since I've been mayor, it's always been around 1 to 1.5 million, but I certainly have heard Counselor Gravell, Counselor Manning-Martin, and others have advocated for more, and I thought this was a good year to do that, and I thought it was appropriate to try to reduce the burden on our taxpayers. But I am very wary of taking more than that, because that creates a gap that might be difficult to cover in the years ahead. But I did think it was appropriate, and I did feel that there was some belief by the council that we could take a little bit more out, and that's why, we went up to 2.6. Last year was 1.5, but I thought that additional 1.1 was appropriate this year.
Thank you. Further questions or comments, Counselors? Counselor Sinewitz?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, it's certainly, you know, I agree with what Counselor Gravell says to a point about the amount of free cash, you know. I don't want to call it hoarding free cash, but, you know, coming up on 20, $21 million in free cash, I don't know how many communities have the luxury of having that, you know, God forbid there was a catastrophe. But, you know, we've had 14 straight years of tax increases, and I almost felt that, I was hoping this year, I know we had extra costs, but at some point, I'd like, I think we could balance this budget once, and with, you know, almost 20 million in free cash, I get it. So, I started looking at, everybody's talking about the CIP. So, if we go to page eight, okay, it says, this is new growth. This is not existing. This is stuff that happens, works. We've got 872,350 dollars in revenue from our new growth, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, if we go back to page five, I look at the 2015 values, and I look at the 2016 values, and I apply those rates, we have a net gain of 277,000. So, then I proceed to go to page, the CIP page, and I'm trying to figure why we're in the hole, 645,000 on new CIP growth. Then I look down, and I see that 41% of commercial businesses or properties are getting a tax So, we're 3.6 in the hole, we're taking 2.6 out of free cash, that leaves us a million in the hole. If we didn't even touch those rates and left them what they were paying, there's 645,000, we're done to under a half a million dollars, and we could easily take that out of free cash, and we're done. So, you can look at it both ways, about we're passing the burden on to the commercial properties, but there's different reasons. So, if we go over to residential, I'm looking at, you're looking at increases, you know, more 5,000 to 9,999. I'm assuming that's a brand-new house. There's some development, there's five homes where they put in, so they've got a tax bill of 5 or 6,000 dollars. That's what I'm guessing. Then we get another one from 1,001 to 5,000, this 50, I'm assuming that's probably Salamini's properties. I don't know what the taxes are up there. So, 27% of the residents are getting a tax cut, while 41% of the business community is getting a tax cut. So, something doesn't jive with me. We get all this new growth, and we're netting 277,000. So, I don't, and I, as it comes to how you assess a business and why Analogic went up in value, I don't know. Did they add on to their building? Did they rent out part of their building to bring in revenue? Because we all know, commercial properties are assessed based on what type of revenue is getting. I don't know these factors. But what I get concerned about is, and I don't have the data, and I could spend, you know, all week going on the computer and looking up to see, are 10 biggest tax, commercial taxpayers, how many getting tax cuts? How many getting tax increases? Not, you know, and I don't expect you to go through that, but I just don't, I just don't know. And there's a couple other items. In lieu of taxes, we've had, you know, we've had this discussion before about how it's negotiated, and I don't, I think that goes right through, I think, through the mayor's office. So, when Children's Hospital, you know, opens up in Centennial Park, they don't pay taxes, they pay in lieu of taxes. And it doesn't seem like as time has gone by, I can't see it, where is it? Where's in lieu of taxes? Was it above?
Fifth one down?
Where was it?
Fifth one down from the top.
Okay. So, it's really, for the past five, six, five years, it's really increased marginally. And I think that with some better negotiation, we could bring in more revenue. And Counselor Gravell has a good point, that sometimes we underestimate our revenues, but on some point, we can underestimate our costs, because this vocational school, I'm hearing rumblings next year, that we could be out another 700 to a million dollars in an extra enrollment. So, I don't know where that money's coming from. So, I would like to have seen the CIP, no tax decreases for anybody in the CIP. Those 41%, keep them what they're at. We pick up 645,000, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, and then we take another half a million, we're done. But, you know, that's not my decision, but that's how I feel about it, and I think that we're better than that. I think after 14 years, you know, I know that the mayor picked up from a previous administration, and there's a lot of things going on there, and I know we've been aggressive going after a lot of things that we want to accomplish here, like that school city that's being built right now. Those are all great things, but I just would like to see once, in my life on this council, that we could balance a budget and not hit the taxpayers with a tax increase. And sometimes you have to raise taxes, and we have. There's no doubt about it. You just have to, and I think that, I think next year's going to be a good year. There's a lot of growth, a lot of things happening, and so, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Driscoll.
Just quickly, historically, I've been here when there were no tax raises and tax increases, and I saw how the city was moving, and a lot of people were very happy that they were saving a lot of dollars, but there was a lot of criticism about our educational systems, various other sundry things where people wanted to see money spent. So, I would congratulate the mayor and his team for their hard work. I think that they maintain an extremely reasonable tax rate as comparison to our neighbors, and their conservative viewpoints have certainly made us an extremely livable city, where there are a lot of people that want to move here, judged by the assessment value of the homes. So, the other thing that I also bring out is that we're very lucky because of our location, and I think that that's a very important part of this whole issue about whether or not people are going to be moving in or moving out. We're very close to a very skilled population with tremendous education, and I think we're a very livable city at a reasonable cost, and I think we're going in the right way. So, I thank you.
Further comments or questions, Counselors? Seeing none. Counselor Gravell?
Yes. No, I don't have a comment. Are we ready to, have we closed the public hearing at this point in time?
Counselors, you heard the motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Any opposed? It is a vote.
Tim, I have the transfer motions here. Is the proper motion to accept the rates first? I don't have that on the sheet.
I think we're going to take them in the order that is listed, do the transfers first, and then vote the real estate exemptions, and then vote on tax classification.
Okay.
So, I think your first motion is just to receive the communications from the mayor, and then make your motions.
Motion to receive communications from the mayor regarding the appropriation requests. Do I have to name each one?
Just items C through H.
Item C, D, E, F, G.
And then you also want to receive B, which is the real estate tax exemptions, and B, too. Yep.
Item B as well.
And item B as well. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It is a vote. Counselor Gravell.
Now, I can go on to the list. First motion is appropriations submitted for the transfer of $240,000 from CPC Unreserved to CPC Crystal Lake, the amount of $160,000 in PVMHS complex, $80,000. Making that funding available to be taken as local receipts, so moved.
On that motion, Counselors, comments? Roll call.
Counselors Mazzullis, Gould, Garabedian, Sassla, Gravell, McGinn, Manning-Martin, Osborne, Driscoll, Sinewitz, Walsh. Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Counselor Gravell.
Next motion is based on the classification hearings, to vote to approve the following transfers to offset the fiscal 2016 tax rate. Transfer $400,000 from Employer Health to reduce the fiscal 2016 tax levy, so moved.
On that motion, Counselors, roll call.
Counselors Mazzullis, Gould, Garabedian, Sassla, Gravell, McGinn, Manning-Martin, Osborne, Driscoll, Sinewitz, Walsh. Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Next motion is the transfer of 500,000 from CIP Unrestricted to reduce the fiscal 2016 tax levy, so moved.
Counselors, on that motion, roll call.
Counselors Mazzullis, Gould, Garabedian, Sassla, Gravell, McGinn, Manning-Martin, Osborne, Driscoll, Sinewitz, Walsh. Motion carries 11 to nothing.
The next motion is the transfer, 2 million, oh, no, it says 1.5 million. 1.5 million from unreserved fund balance to reduce the fiscal 2016 tax levy, so moved.
On that motion, Counselors, roll call.
Counselors Mazzullis, Gould, Garabedian, Sassla, Gravell, McGinn, Manning-Martin, Osborne, Driscoll, Sinewitz, Walsh. Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Next motion is the transfer of 171,000 from the abatement surplus to reduce the fiscal 2016 tax levy, so moved.
On that motion, Counselors, roll call.
Counselors Mazzullis, Gould, Garabedian, Sassla, Gravell, McGinn, Manning-Martin, Osborne, Driscoll, Sinewitz, Walsh. Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Next motion is the transfer of $58,200 from the parking meter revenue to fund 2016 parking meter revenue budget.
I think that's just going to the FY '16 budget. Yeah.
On that motion, Counselors, roll call.
Counselors Mazzullis, Gould, Garabedian, Sassla, Gravell, McGinn, Manning-Martin, Osborne, Driscoll, Sinewitz, Walsh. Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Move to vote to adopt Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988.
You're all set, Counselor. Proceed, please. Thank you.
Are you sure? Vote to adopt Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988, which is the optional additional real estate exemptions for 2016, so moved.
On that motion, Counselors, roll call.
Counselors Mazzullis, Gould, Garabedian, Sassla, Gravell, McGinn, Manning-Martin, Osborne, Driscoll, Sinewitz, Walsh. Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Following votes to approve the tax classification, motion to adopt a residential factor of .812999 for fiscal 2016, which is 165% CIP, so moved.
On that motion, Counselors, roll call.
Counselors Mazzullis, Gould, Garabedian, Sassla, Gravell, McGinn, Manning-Martin, Osborne, Driscoll, Sinewitz, Walsh. Motion carries 10 to 1.
Counselor Gravell.
Motion not to grant a discount for open space, so moved.
On that motion, Counselors, roll call. On that motion, roll call.
Counselors Mazzullis, Gould, Garabedian, Sasla, Gravell, McGinn, Manning-Martin, Osborne, Driscoll, Sinewitz, Walsh. Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Move not to adopt the residential exemption, so moved.
On that motion, Counselors, roll call.
Counselors Mazzullis, Gould, Garabedian, Sasla, Gravell, McGinn, Manning-Martin, Osborne, Driscoll, Sinewitz, Walsh. Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Move not to adopt the small commercial exemption, so moved.
On that motion, roll call.
Counselors Mazzullis, Gould, Garabedian, Sasla, Gravell, McGinn, Manning-Martin, Osborne, Driscoll, Sinewitz, Walsh. Motion carries 11 to nothing.
There's probably one more motion in line, which is, there is an item I on the agenda, move to submit item I to the Finance Committee for review on December 10.
On that motion, Counselors, all those in favor, any opposed? It is a vote.
Before we leave, we all need to sign the tax, anybody who voted in favor has to sign the tax classification.
That we do. And before we leave, I also want to point out that we have Counselors-elect Sharrast and Tarko here. So, welcome. Accept the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Counselors. Sure. Thank you. Thank you, guys.